Welcome to the Public Works Department.
We're losing the crowd.
I thought a few more people would have stuck around and hear about roads and fun things like that. Well, I guess following Tom Tbersky, I'm Tom Roy, Public Works Director and now Town Engineer. We're going to go through budget. It's a pretty big budget. And this is kind of a daunting slide. A lot of numbers here. When you look at this, you've got to keep in mind the value that you're getting. We cover a lot of ground. We don't do quite as much of the fun stuff as both the library and Parks and Rec that went before us. But we're basically the foundation of a lot of the other departments. So when the police get up later to talk, we take care of all of their police cars. At the library, we help do all of their setups. Parks and Rec, we work hand in hand with those. Social Services, the presented the other night, we do all of their setups for them. We help with all of the food distribution. Last year during the COVID food distributions, we put probably more staff hours to a lot of those distributions, just in terms of the logistics to get everything set up. So there's a lot of people here working very hard for these dollars. When you look at some of the increases, the ones that stick out, stuck out to me when I first saw this slide, is under Buildings and Grounds, we see a 10.85 increase without the labor. That's basically related to the fact that that's almost entirely a labor fund. So you take the labor out, it makes things very subjective to changes. And then we had a $1,600 increase in that line item for fuel. The other one was the transfer station where, again, you see a 34% increase in the transfer station. And you think, what in the world could that be? That's the material recycling that we'll talk about later under our CNR budget. So generally speaking, modest increases overall, mainly due to things like utility, fuel supplies, and the fact that we are still dealing with the increases associated with the pandemic. We have 44.06 budgeted full-time employees. And that's because we have two part-time employees, one in engineering and one in our Buildings and Grounds Division. The part-time employee on Buildings and Grounds will probably by later this afternoon to clean up after our meeting here today. That position covers the weekends and is a very useful position. And then obviously, in engineering, we have a part-time admin. For the 44.06 employees, we cover a lot of ground. And it's a low number when you see the amount of work that needs to get done. Right now, we're actually down a few people in our different departments through retirements. We have one person who's been out on workers' comp. We've recently had one person leave to go to what they believe will be greener pastures. So it's hard. Just now, we are calling out the whole crew to take care of the snowstorm. But we're down two positions right now, just within Highway. So WPCA, we always keep that budget separate. The point that I know Sean likes when I make is that the WPCA is utility that is operated by the town. Every single dollar of the WPCA's budget is for user fees. Not a single penny is tax dollars. And I think that's important. And the other thing, we had our meeting this past Thursday night where we recommended that they not increase their fees in this upcoming year. They'll be voting on that next month, but I feel fairly confident that we're providing a great service down there at a very reasonable fee for our users. And it's a real benefit to the town in terms of helping with economic development because we have the capacity to manage something nobody wants to talk about. Okay, areas of focus. Public Works Administration, that is essentially myself, my admin, and we have a project administrator, Ray Harris, that some of you may have met when we did the facilities tour. We're going to be working on and continuing the implementation and the rollout of the townwide facilities master plan. We're working very closely on the changes associated with Mira and what are we going to do with the town's trash. Again, my presentation is not nearly as fun and as exciting as the ones you've seen before. We're talking about wastewater and trash already. We're only a couple of slides in. But it's important because if we don't watch how we do these things that are so basic to operation of the towns, there are incurred costs to both our residents and our businesses. We're working very hard on continuing the implementation of our sidewalk rehabilitation program. We also are going to be administering a number of grants for new sidewalks. And that's going to be taking place both in Public Works Administration and in Engineering. We're going to be constructing a sidewalk from, essentially from Antonio's at Hoskins all the way north along Route 10. That's going to go out to bid hopefully in about six to eight weeks. And will be constructed during this coming summer. It's going to be very well-supported by the businesses. And we're actually even able to add a level of street lighting to that project. We're also going to be-
You just connect, not to say just, but so it just connects to the big Y side?
No, no. It's going to go all the way from Hoskins all the way up to the DOT facility.
In case you want to go shopping in the DOT's division?
The reason we extended it up to the DOT facilities is because they have a park and ride lot, which made it much more likely that that would be grant-funded. But it's also going to tie into the apartments up in that area.
And the reason why we don't go the other way is because we obviously have the bike trail.
We have the bike trail. And there's also going to be an enhanced crossing to get people over to the bike trail from Antonio's. So again, we're giving people a north-south connection up there. And again, when we had a couple of preliminary meetings with the businesses and everybody was very excited. It is interesting, we had to make some tough choices as to whether it was going to be on the east side or the west side. The decision was to put it on the west side. But I know, and it's too bad we don't have our planning department here, there's some additional development that's hopefully coming our way on the west side of the street as well.
Sorry to make this backside. So finish your sidewalks. I have more sidewalk questions.
We have received one of two grants that we applied for, for the Fire Town-
Fire Town?
Yep. So it looks like we are very favorable that we're actually going to receive both grants. And preliminary conversations are that both of the grant awarding agencies will allow us to use both of those grants and enhance the project. So still fingers crossed in that one. But that would really allow us to design a project this coming year that would be constructed in '23 that would-
Is our team execute that or have we bid that out?
We are looking to do that in-house design.
No, no. I'm saying the actual work.
That would be bid out, yes.
And then, I don't understand, what's happening with Hot Meadow from Pine Hill, like north to Simsberry Inn? There seems to be some clearing. So you did pine, you know, that's a disaster.
Up Long Woodland Street.
Yeah, I mean, it's such a mishmash of, you know, one of our, it's the old sidewalks in nowhere. We have blocks and blocks of sidewalks. So it seems like there was some tree cutting, clearing on that retention pond or pond that's right at the bottom of, across from the home that, you know, right before the Mitchell property, there's anyways. Is that what that is? Correct, yes. That's not preparation for extending sidewalk?
No, that was DOT had a drainage failure on one. And I'm not sure about the one closer to Mitchell's. The one right next to Benny's was actually a failed, one of their failed drainage structures.
Okay, so that is not necessarily a project?
It's not a town project.
Continuing, because that's a state, okay.
Well, we did have the sanitary sewer installation last fall along Woodland Street and portions of Hot Meadow Street. And that was, that was a WPCA project. And because the sanitary sewer disrupted the sidewalk, we ended up getting new sidewalks out of that. And then this coming year, we're currently in design for sidewalks from essentially that area. We'll call it Brookside Bagels down towards the Old South School. That's going to be this year's-
Oh, sort of along that bank of pine trees? There's an old bed in there that's, a walkway bed that's all grown in?
It's one of those areas that it's, I don't even know what they were thinking. Because almost this roadway is a little wider in sections, but that's technically a sidewalk. And we're going to make that a concrete sidewalk for that length. And that's actually being designed right now by a student intern who's a student at Central Connecticut State University, so.
What's South Hill School? Where is that?
The Old South School.
Where is that?
Across from the gas, kind of like the gas station.
Right across from the gas station and like the-
The Pride Station?
Yeah, right. That was the pre, that was the South School. That was, Latimer Lane got built and then that got closed down.
Man, I've become like the Old Townie, Chris. It's me and you.
My mom taught there.
Old South School, down by the well.
I'll stop here and tell you, as I do actually have a fair number of residents asking about sidewalks in that part of town because there's an increase, that's a, it seems like we're doing a project, but we're not really doing a project. So getting better communication out, not that it's to say, hey, this is not necessarily, it's my misunderstanding. I thought it was us. No, it's the state because of some other project that failed. But, you know, ultimately completing it, looks like it could be an amazing project.
Yeah, and what I would tell you, all in all, we right now are ahead of schedule on our sidewalk replacement program. So it's going very well. And then with some of these grants where we're adding additional sidewalk is also beneficial. And a few years back when we did the townwide pedestrian and bicycle master plan, I was shocked when we reached out to our community, how many people wanted sidewalks. It was really surprising to me. So it's really been a good program for us.
How many miles of sidewalk do we have in town?
About 12 right now, but we're adding to that.
You've been waiting to roll that number out on us, haven't you?
No, I just happen to know that one. I stay up late at night going, how many-
Is that a setup?
He prepped me to ask that.
Bus out the main to Connecticut.
And Sean, he's going to say how many miles of roads and then how often we pave them too, right? That's always coming.
165.7 miles.
And in general, how often do sidewalks need replacements?
It depends if they're asphalt or if they're bituminous sidewalks.
Or brick?
Yeah, well, brick. Another story there. Our concrete sidewalks are going to last a solid 30 years. Our asphalt sidewalks are going to probably be somewhere in that 15 to 20 range, depending upon things like tree roots and whether or not trucks drive over them and things like that.
So our program that replaces, they're replacing with a longer life?
It depends. Along state roads, we're doing concrete. And along roads like Fire Town, we're doing the asphalt sidewalks. Asphalt sidewalks are, we get a lot more mileage per dollar. And we have, it's easier in cases for us to make repairs on them if we have to. The other thing that we're doing under Public Works Administration, and we did quite a bit of it last year, is we're going to be moving forward with additional traffic calming and intersection improvements. Buildings and Grounds, we just recently got a new supervisor in this division, Matt Hopkins. He's really bringing a fresh new look to some of our buildings. These are the people who are really going to be working hard on implementing our facilities master plan for our town buildings that we're responsible for. Looking at improving our HVAC systems, both in terms of comfort and efficiency. We are going to be presenting a project for painting of Scout Hall. We have some minor improvement at Community Farm. And again, these are the people who support Social Services and the food distribution, which with their addition of their new facility, it's going to be something we're going to have to put some special effort to this year to track how much extra effort that is for us and to make sure that we come up with good systems to be efficient with taking care of that additional building. In Highway, and I was remiss to say, we have Tony Piazza online from the WPCA that I think many of you met. And we also have our Superintendent of Highways here, Kevin Clemmons. Kevin's been with us for about nine years and really runs the day-to-day operation in Highway and does a great job. You may have seen, we ducked out earlier. That was because he was busy checking as to when to call in the guys for the snow that's coming down now. Big part of what Highway does, obviously, the pavement management work. Sean, how many miles of road do we have?
165?
165.
Here to Maine.
And average, how often do we pave them?
I throw out the questions here, Chris.
I'm learning. I'm supposed to cue these things up?
We're on a 17-year cycle.
Okay, there we go.
We aim to pave 10 miles of road every year.
That was the other stat we should possibly know. You guys, Amber and Heather, make sure you get that one. Memorialize that one too.
Do you have the map?
It was cut from the presentation.
It was not in this year's.
It was. Add it up in the-
My favorite slide.
I'll bring it up. All right. A big part of what Kevin does in the Highway Department is going to be working with our supply chain challenges, our heavy equipment, the trucks. I mean, we've all heard how hard it is to buy a new personal passenger car. When we're looking to buy the heavy trucks and things we buy, it is really, the lead times have become quite challenging. The other thing is obviously, we can't have good roads unless we have good drainage. We've got to make sure that the water gets off the road so that you don't have puddles. Puddles actually affect the structural integrity of the asphalt. So again, it's a big part of what Kevin does in supporting our team. WPCA, they're going to continue to meet their permit requirements. Again, WPCA doesn't sound fun and exciting, but what they do more than anything else is take everybody else's waste, clean it up in an effective way to then protect the quality of the Farmington River. The water that they discharge into the Farmington River is cleaner than the water in the river.
That was the other fun fact. I should have remembered that one.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Cleaner. With the WPCA, a big part, and you have Tony online there, is keeping up with the changing state regulations and mandates. Looking forward to make sure that we're not caught off guard and we plan accordingly for everything that's coming up. We also have a lot of staff retirements coming up in that department. So we're really looking to get some new staff members in, get them developed so that we don't lose any of our institutional knowledge. We've been having, we actually have two open positions in that department right now. And we've been having a hard time getting people to fill those.
So that is true in that space as well?
Yeah, we actually had candidates to the point that we made offers and they didn't accept, which was very disappointing.
Yeah, that's going to be interesting as we source talent, right? And then we continue to employ talent over the long term as it becomes a fight for resources amongst municipalities, right?
And I'll be honest, for the first time in my tenure here, in the last two months, we've had two employees leave for better opportunities. Relatively new employees that just, for whatever reason, closer to home, found similar benefits. And one of which was a WPCA who was, you know, just really, a younger employee that just really showed great promise and went to, I think, Windsor Locks. Engineering. Engineering's going to get used to their new boss.
He's a tough guy out here.
So there's the management philosophy.
We're going to have fun, I tell you. It is kind of exciting because a lot of these projects are things that really relate to things I did before I came to Simsberry. I used to do a lot with both railroad bridges and dams, oddly enough. So designing repairs for the maintenance of the Flower Bridge is really an exciting project. And we're going to be working on that this year, the construction of the gateway entrance signs. Hopefully, we're going to be looking at the Terriffill to Bloomfield Trail under construction. We're going to be chasing down every grant we can to get a lot of these more important projects funded. And specifically, the trail that's going to go from Route 10 into Curtis Park. And then we still have the missing length from Curtis Park into Terriffill, which is a beautiful walk on the right day. We're going to be in the process, we have two bridges that are going out for rehabilitation. The bids are going to be going out later this year for construction this coming fall. And that would be on Fire Town Road and Barn door Hills, both over Bissell Brook. We're going to be supporting the Board of Education with the design and construction of Latimer Lane School. Hopefully, we're going to have the Town Hall site improvements, the parking lot and everything else going on for this facility. We have Eno Memorial Hall is going to be under construction, designing construction late this year as well for that parking lot, which is in just rough shape. And then we're also going to be looking to improve the entrances. And we're going to get to that under the Capitol. And then we have, just went out to bid and was just awarded this week, the parking lot for the Performing Arts Center and the ADA improvements. We actually will be in construction next week on that project.
Yeah, let's clap for that. It's good news, good news.
All right. Like putting these slides in here, just breathe. Budget highlights. We're looking at a little over $26,000 in increases for full-time salaries due to general wage increases and negotiated contract step increases. And you can see the breakdown of how it falls for the various divisions. Clearly, Highway looks to be the biggest because Highway is the biggest division at 20 staff members. The minimum wage increase has a smaller impact on us than it does on Parks and Rec, with a little under $3,500 there. We actually, our biggest concern is whether or not we're going to be able to find summer helpers to do some of these jobs. In a perfect year, we have several people working in the Highway Department. And it's great. We get them trained as certified flaggers. So now our more expensive and more skilled labor, instead of being the flagger on the job, can be the ones constructing the catch base and operating the equipment. And, you know, prior to the pandemic, we had some great Simsberry High School and Simsberry College students that would come in and work with us and, you know, always, always good students.
How much communication do you do with Matt? Like, I mean, if there was, like I asked my daughter this week about, how did she find out about games at the high school? And as I said, is there a big board up? There is your whatever? She goes, no, there's a Facebook, there's a Facebook page or whatever. And then a senior's responsible, I'll get to my point. Senior's responsible for like populating that, okay? Why aren't we, you know, using that same job board? Why aren't we working with Matt Curtis to put announcements into the seniors or juniors, you know, face? That, hey, Simsberry, you know, Public Works is looking for employees this summer. Are we doing that, I mean, that kind of thing to the Police Department? Does anybody do?
We've been trying. One of the things I think we've been really trying to do is not, as departments compete with other departments for summer kids. So we've been going through Eric Gomes, but completely to your point-
The town of Simsberry is looking for whatever. Did you know that you have a, you know, it's, we're-
Yeah, no, I know exactly what you're saying because we've been, yeah, great point. And then the other one that we don't know where this is going to pan out, but we've actually started some conversations with Simsberry High School Tech Ed Department. And there's some talk of them actually doing a field trip out to Public Works to see some of the stuff we do. They were very excited about the opportunity to do that. We're open for a field trip for you people anytime you want, Sean.
To Chris's point, though, it wouldn't really be competing with other departments if something went out. They had every department on it. And you've included the lifeguard program and babysitting.
Under, under, under the Highway though. The Highway would be first on that list. I mean, as it is, you have a choice. You can shovel hot asphalt with Kevin and flag traffic or you can be at the pool all summer. It's a tough sell.
But I mean, they'd be paid at minimum wage, right?
We, the Highway Department traditionally had paid minimum or a dollar above minimum.
So what's that, 16 bucks then?
That would be 16, yeah.
I mean-
And where we always went a little bit above is, they are required to have steel toe boots. And it's, we put them to work.
Do any of these, you know, when you say working with tech ed, do any of these kind of work with the capstone experience that they have at the-
I'm not familiar with that one.
That they have to complete?
I'm not familiar with that either.
Oh.
We have a capstone scene right now.
Yes. So that could be something interesting to discuss with the Board of Ed is the capstone requirement. And some of it allows them to go, the students to go into the community. I'm just, I have a freshman, so I'm just learning how it all works. So I don't have a lot of the answers, but I know it's something that could potentially be something to discuss.
I would add to that, like you're going to have kids who are going to go to school for engineering, like my son, right?
Yeah.
So any, any kind of engineering, highway work, whether it's an internship, make it an internship, whatever.
Yeah, and one of the things we are, we did add this year was some money for an engineering intern or a student intern to help out in Public Works Administration. Last year, we had a young college student who came back two days a week. And that's really what was the impetus for us getting David Drive Traffic Calming Study going. He managed the bulk of that for us. Took in a lot of those good calls in support of, you know, putting things to slow you down. But we are certainly looking to do that. And I've talked a little bit with Dr. Koo at the high school about working with her because, you know, if they need somebody to come in and talk about engineering, we have those resources. And I know we've had people out to the WPCA, to the plant, to do a tour of that as well from the high school, so. As much as we, I joke about not being exciting, we are always open to have people in to see what we do. We're even kind of kicking around the idea of whether or not we can have an open house this May for Public Works Awareness Week. We've done the touch of trucks in the past. And we're looking to do this and if we, you know, right now, everything's trending well with COVID. Certainly something we would like to do, whether it's on a Thursday afternoon or a Saturday morning. And not only would the kids get to see the trucks, but to see a little bit more about what the operation is out there. And, you know, selfishly, the kids bringing the truck, that's just our draw in to then have the parents understand what the drivers do.
That's a great idea.
When you stand next to that truck, you realize how big it is. And you're asking them to be this close to your mailbox so that you don't have to shovel in front of your mailbox for your mailman to give you mail. And you're going, wow, okay. It's a tough job. Some capital non-recurring projects. We talked about the traffic calming. This, again, I think was one of our first projects and very successful, where it's West Mountain and Notch Road. I kind of like it up at the top there. We actually had a field meeting, COVID-safe field meeting out in their neighborhood. And it included, I wish I knew the dog's name. But we- Fido. Koojo. But it was great. We brought them in. We said, this is the way it's going to look. What are some things that would help you? They really liked the idea of having the granite block curbing. So we really went to some extra efforts to do that. They were working with us on how the plantings would look. And in the end, again, it was, it was a real good partnership with the neighborhood. And it made a difference. The speed velocities before and after putting in that island were reduced. And more importantly, they felt not only that they had been heard, but that it was now safer.
Yeah.
So great success. I know David Drive may not have been as welcoming. There was a lot more people cutting through on David Drive who had some concerns about, why would you want to slow us down? But again, it's looking at things holistically that our roads are not just for cars anymore. And the road you're driving on is the same neighborhood road that kids should be able to walk on and ride their bikes on and be safe. So this $100,000 number is not just traffic calming. It's also looking at intersection configurations. We have a couple of intersections where although we do not have a high history of severe accidents, we have configurations that are not safe. And, you know, it's the way the town roads were developed from old farm to market roads. And this is money to take a high-level look. And on some of them, it's going to be to develop concept plans so that in the future, we know what it's going to cost to do potentially major reconfigurations. And if we can find some smaller, simpler fixes that we can do in the midterm, we could also use the money for constructing smaller, simpler repairs.
How involved is the PD on these projects?
We work very closely with the PD on these as part of-
Do they point out places where they're-
Yeah, right now, what we've even done through our Legal Traffic Authority meeting, we've been identifying which intersections we feel are the first candidates on the list for this.
They do speed monitoring as well, right, with the, they hang the box to-
Yep, they're the ones who are doing the measurement and verification piece to find out what this works. And part of this money is also going to be potentially to hire a level of consulting engineering for support. Even though I am an engineer, I don't do traffic design every single day. And being smart about the potential for liability, we spent a very modest fee of, in the neighborhood of $10,000 on the West Mountain Notch Road intersection to have essentially a third-party review to make sure that the dimensions and everything were correct and accurate.
I have a question. How does so, when you do different traffic calming initiatives, so say you put in, you know, sort of similar in David Drive, it's like, looks like a little roundabout.
Yeah, it's temporary.
Oh, it's temporary?
Yeah.
Say you were to do more permanent ones or speed bump. How do you look at then rates for, so if there was an emergency and you needed fire trucks to come through or ambulance? So how do you weigh the, you know, the forced slowdown to then when you actually need something like that to happen?
It's all, it is all part of the issue. When we look at this notch in West Mountain one, and I had a video when we had the temporary setup, we actually had a fire truck and a school bus go through. And when we did David Drive, when we put up new patterns, we would be out there with Jamie Ball from the Police Department, Chief Baldus from the Fire Department, and JR Salters from Salters. I showed up with my pickup truck. I got the chief with the ladder truck. And I got JR with a school bus. I felt very underrepresented that day.
I saw the meeting. I mean, again, I've seen it with my own two eyes that that happens.
I think it's great for the public, though, to know that that goes into that equation.
It's really important. Plus, the temporary ones that you put up with the little flags, I mean, in an emergency, a fire truck can just drive right over them.
Exactly right. And some of these, even when we did this island here, we did a sloped granite curb on the island. So in the event that either a police car, a fire truck, or an errant driver miscalculates, it's not going to be a 90-degree granite block curb that would blow out a tire or cause an accident. And these are the things that we really, you know, again, it looks very simple. We just threw it on island. But these are all the considerations that we want it to take into place. I know a lot of people have asked over the past few years for speed humps or speed bumps in their neighborhood. We generally don't favor those because both the Police Department and the Fire Department don't support them. Because one, it's a lot of noise in your neighborhood. You can imagine boom, 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 all through the night, every time a car goes down your road. And they are concerned about their response time. The other thing we have to keep in mind when we talk about speed bumps is how that would affect the flow of rainwater down the roadway. And making sure we're not getting a spot that's going to freeze.
One of the things I appreciated when I was first elected is I received a lot of questions from residents wanting to know, can we do X, Y, and Z? And a lot of stuff with, with traffic is very counterintuitive, like stop signs, in fact, are not really intended to slow cars down. And I have always appreciated the emails that you would provide or the chief would provide to the people asking, really educating people on, you know, these practices. And it's very thoughtful.
Yeah, I think that's a great point because, again, from personal experience on David Drive, I think there's about 50 traffic engineers that are now on Facebook that you could probably employ as we add on to the cause of the day. But, you know, you and your folks did a great job of educating us and other folks on, again, why we don't use stop signs, why we did, you know, those three different tests on David Drive, right? And your team went as far as the plant mums in one of the tests. I mean, again, you guys always go the extra mile, I think, not only in the education, but in the thoughtfulness for how you deploy the projects. I think that's important.
Well, and I think we took a big takeaway from that project is adding flowers to everything makes it better.
I was just going to say, on the Notch Road intersection, and I've seen, I live by another intersection where this happens, is it's not so much even the speed. It's that you, when you make those turns, you go into the other lane. I mean, there are some curves here in town where, I mean, because I feel like that median, I mean, it does slow people down, but it also really makes the person that's taking that right turn stay in the right lane. Because otherwise, like, you just took over the whole opposite side of the road.
Yeah, there was, the data from the traffic count before was shocking where I think there was a car in the- Yeah, there was, the, the data from the traffic count before was shocking, where I think there, there was a, a car in the seventy mile an hour range. You know, coming off West Mountain and, and, you know, and again, those are the ones that it, it becomes very dangerous. That's the car that, you know, you, you looked and you truly never saw before you pulled out of your driveway.
Yeah.
Right, right. But if you're taking, that's a, a, a sharp curve, you're not staying in, in your lane when you are speeding and trying to take that curve.
And the way it was set up before, it was essentially like a highway off-ramp. So you, you were whatever, you were, you were at whatever speed you were on traveling south and west mountain, and that was the same speed you now carried.
Like it was a one-way ramp, but really you have oncoming cars. Yeah.
People that live there, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Exactly. It may be on your way to work, but it's somebody else's neighborhood.
Well, that's the thing, as any, and I'll, I'll do this during the chief's discussion too, is I, I think the chief has said this, the loss of civility when people are behind the wheel is noticeable as a result of COVID. And this is a really terrible offshoot of that. The fact that we have to invest taxpayer dollars in getting people that live in this community to slow down and keep our roads safe is mind-boggling to me that we don't have that much respect for each other that will slow down in people's neighborhoods.
No, and, and you brought up a good point, though, that we do work closely with the Police and the Fire Department. And one of the things that we probably didn't highlight earlier, and since Kevin's here, is the work of the Highway Department is so closely related to both the Police and the Fire Department in terms of emergency response during, you know, our large storm events, hurricanes. We had plenty of hurricane remnants last year. We had ESE and a few other things. And, and it's that staff that's out there at all hours of the night, and they're on call three hundred sixty-five days a year. So, certainly important. Letting everybody know their welcome to Simsbury, adding three new gateway brownstone monuments. We're looking at doing that on Hot Meadow Street in Terriffill and along Bushy Hill, where one of the older signs was actually destroyed a couple of years ago. I think following this, we potentially have the potential in the future to add one more, which would be on Wolkit Road, was the only other place we had any entrance signs. The challenge on this is we have to make sure that it's surveyed, work with DOT. But again, I think this is actually a nice picture right off of Google Maps, so.
Can I give, can I just give the press to the three-fiftieth who donated the money for the third, which enables us to also do Terriffill in there, right?
Yeah. Perfect. So, up, up at the community farm, we have two CNR projects listed. We have fifteen thousand dollars to do some basic maintenance-level repairs on the barn. If you look closely at that picture, you'll see, you know, there's, there's a border two missing. There's some rotten boards, and we want to make sure that we keep the building as weather tight as possible. This is, again, minor repairs for fifteen thousand dollars. We all know what happened to the price of wood in the last year or two. But this is some getting, getting them secured. And while we're doing that, we're probably going to take a little deeper dive into the building to see what it may need long-term. And then adding five thousand dollars is an annual budget item to help with all of the maintenance of the facilities out there. Because they are town-owned facilities, and just like everything, they're wearing out.
What are those, um, what is, I know they used to have camps there, but what is community farms used for currently at the moment? I think Gifts of Love is there, correct?
Gifts, Gifts of Love, it's Gifts of Love owns Community Farm or runs Community Farm. They have a, a number of farmers that are farming, actively farming the field. A good portion of that produce goes to our social services, and a good portion of that produce goes to feed people in need in and around Hartford and Avon, so.
Wonderful.
Can I actually give them another plug? They, a lot of people don't realize that they, they do an incubator farmer program. And most of those farmers, if not all of them, are, are minorities or coming from sort of non-traditional farming backgrounds. And I think it's a really neat thing that our town is able to host that.
Yeah, and I know they have some, some changes going on up there. I know they've had some great farm table events. But I think it, they've really, as a whole, tried to be an asset for the community, so. Glad Lisa's here to talk about the elevator renovation project. This would be a two-year project. First year would just be to get designs in place to replace the elevators at our three major buildings, which would be the library, Eno Memorial Hall, and here at Town Hall. Eno Memorial Hall, we've run the risk. We have seniors in there. They use the elevator. They need the elevator. And when it goes down, really, the building's not safe to be occupied. Town Hall, we have a difficult configuration here with all of the multiple levels when you think of somebody who is not an able-bodied individual, and certainly making sure the elevators function properly and are comfortable. And the library's in the exact same boat. Lot, lot, lot of use, and we want to make sure that it's maintained.
We didn't do the library when we redid the library?
No.
The elevator?
That was, that, that actually was one of the few. That predated me by about a year, but that was not done. I think there was, um, some of the mechanicals may have fallen off of the, the list on that project.
That would have been left out of scope.
Okay. This is a replacement of a two thousand eleven F-350 truck that's used by our Buildings and Grounds staff. This is the truck that is being replaced. It actually went twelve years of service. It actually started its life in the Highway Department and was transferred over to Buildings and Grounds. Should have been replaced at ten years, and sadly, this is up on the lift there because the entire rear end blew out, and we had to replace the rear axle. Fortunately, we have very good mechanics. We were able to do this work in-house. But it was probably about thirty-five hundred dollars just in parts, plus a solid week of, of labor to get that done. Those smaller pictures down in the bottom, the, the rear axle, the parts actually broke out. So there was metal on the ground when this was done failing.
You're going to sell it to Duberski? He'll get another five years out of it.
Yeah. Well, no, we had to put, we had to put the rear axle in it because it became, suddenly became a front-wheel-drive truck. It wasn't very valuable. And it's, it's back on the road and in service now. But again, it's, it's why we replace them when we do, and dragging this out to beyond ten years really cost us. And what we do for our replacement vehicles, highway frontline vehicles are seven years. Buildings and grounds, WPCA vehicles are ten years. During a, a major snowstorm, those highway trucks need to be able to respond. If there's a medical call at somebody's house, those pickup trucks like this one here are getting there ahead of, in many cases, the first responders. They're getting there ahead of the ambulance. This will actually plow out somebody's driveway if that's what we need to do to get the ambulance in.
And that's actually happened multiple times in the last few years.
Multiple times, yeah, yeah. And at one point, I believe somebody actually plowed a front lawn because that's what it took to get the stretcher and everything in. And, you know, the guys are going to do it, and then they go right back on their run, and it happened in the middle of the night, and nobody knows.
That's, that's an important piece. And I, I was only half kidding about the Duberski thing because you guys do look to, to downcycle, right, to Tom's team if possible, but it doesn't always work out that way.
It, well, we're in a similar boat. The parks and rec vehicles are on the same maintenance schedule or should be on the same maintenance schedules as Buildings and Grounds, where, again, they're important vehicles, but they're not first-response vehicles like we have in highway. And the other thing, we're replacing these at ten years, and we make a difficult decision of do we keep certain vehicles or do we trade them in? And we really look closely at, at that piece. We have vehicles that are nineteen seventies on the road right now for highway. So we certainly have older vehicles, but they're used for specialty purposes. And we look carefully at what we need in terms of reliability. We have, it's our, called our barricade truck. It's a, like, I think a nineteen seventy-three. Yeah. It's a nineteen seventy-three Freihoffers truck, I swear. But it, it, it was part of the Police Dive Team SWAT, and they were getting rid of it. We'd actually put a brand-new engine in it, my first year here. I don't know. Somehow, the decision was to put a new engine in this vehicle, so when they were getting rid of it, we said, it's ours. We have it loaded up with all of our barricades and everything that we need. So when a tree falls in the middle of the night, somebody goes in, gets in the barricade truck, doesn't need to look to see, oh, do I have a road closed? Do I have a detour? It's all there. If it's a snowstorm, that barricade truck does not go out. We're going to load up and put this stuff in a, in a four-wheel-drive pickup truck.
And this may feel like an extraneous conversation, but I think it's always important to our, to, to educate the taxpayers that, you know, again, we're not buying shiny new pickup trucks for people to play with every year. There's a really thoughtful schedule and replacement plan.
And the other important piece of this, and, and not to get too far off-line, but we buy all of our trucks at a price that you or I can't buy them from. We, we get our trucks deeply discounted from municipalities. I think the folks at Ford, we tend to buy Ford, are very smart, and they realize that if our guys are driving these pickup trucks at work and see how well they work, most of the cars in the parking lot seem to match. All the guys own trucks. I don't know if that's their premise or if it's just to do the right thing and help municipalities. But we buy them at such a deep discount, we've actually had the conversation of should we be shortcycling and selling some of our trucks at four and five years?
Right.
Because if we're getting them for fifteen, twenty thousand dollars less than what a regular consumer can do, now, after a few years, when you look at cost per year of owning and maintenance on it, is it going to actually be cheaper in the long run? Not right now, with the fact that we can't get them for, how, how long's it been since your truck was ordered?
As soon as the budget passed, last July. Hasn't even started getting built yet. We have two others that are in Connecticut and haven't, haven't taken delivery. You can't think of, one of them was hung up at the border in Mexico for six weeks. Six weeks at the Mexican border.
That's the only thing hung up at the border down there.
And moving on. One of the things that was identified by our new, uh, Facilities Supervisor, Matt Hopkins, was, you know, we have a lot of carpeting. We don't have a good full-size carpet cleaner. Twelve thousand dollars seems like a lot, but it's, it's going to really enhance the cleanliness of our buildings. And this particular unit that he's looking at is going to recycle all of the soaps and everything else, so it actually uses less chemicals. So it's actually a green cleaning machine on top of everything else.
Does it work?
It's going to work. And, and more importantly, Chris, it's going to be used. It's not going to sit in a closet somewhere.
Well, if the greener it is, the less likely it seems to work, right? I mean, so it's.
Paying twelve grand to put water down.
That's the offset.
Yeah. Oh, I, I had to throw a little picture in this one because I, I know when we talked about rebalancing library VAV boxes, it would really get you guys excited. These are essentially the controllers that affect how much hotter cold air come out of the units. We realized that they were out of balance. This would be repairing basically half of them and rebalancing the other ones, making the system more efficient, saving us money, better, better occupancy comfort. Same thing here at Town Hall, a little bit different price, different number of units, same exact thing. Important.
I have a question about you. So you mentioned, you've mentioned HVAC a few times. Now, do you have cost estimates of what sort of savings you will see through all of these HVAC renovations?
We do not have a detailed cost estimate right now. What I would, it would be a tedious calculation, which would have a ballpark number attached at the end because what we'd have to do is figure out, it would be tough because you'd have to figure out how far out of balance each one of those sixteen, or each one of those thirty-two units was. So I, I think we could maybe through our vendor give an approximation, but it would be a very rough approximation. I think, as Chris said earlier, fifty percent higher low.
Okay, gotcha.
And then it's putting a dollar value to occupant comfort. So in other words, if the box thinks it's open by thirty percent because it has a damper on it, and it's really open by fifty percent, people may feel hot or cold too soon. And one of the challenges we have in our buildings is the system constantly cycles. The, the room temperature's here is being monitored, and when it's seventy-two degrees, the heating stops. When it gets to seventy degrees, the heating starts. But you go up and down, and how quickly the system reacts to when it's called, makes you feel either hot or cold as a result. So upstairs in the Board of Ed, for example, their, their conference room is terrible. The air comes out at such a velocity, you can almost see the papers on the desk move, which makes people, even at seventy-two, you feel cold because there's air volume moving. And these are all these little things that we're trying to do and capture them so that people feel better and that we're more efficient. Scout Hall, we're looking at painting the building and doing some stair replacement. Just had to throw in pictures of Jake and Isaiah's when they were shoveling during one of the last snowstorms. Clearly, the building needs it. If you drive by it, you can see it. It's a tight number, to be honest, but we're hoping that we may supplement some of this with town resources to do some of the woodworking. All right. I want to bring Kevin up, make him do some chit-chatting. I feel like I've been talking long enough. So, big truck replacement.
I'm just going to stay in the neighborhood, Kevin, if it gets, if it gets tough with you. So, obviously, you guys live in town, and you see our trucks out there. Sometimes we get a snow cone from Chris's kids and, and such. So we, we replace them on thirteen-year cycles. We actually have thirteen plow routes, and every year we replace one. We find that we get a reasonable trade by doing that, and the technology, it seems like it's ever-changing with regards to electronics and ground speed controls. So unfortunately, the price certainly went up from when we did the budget to start with. It was probably in November we started working on this, and I had some numbers to go by, and, and it's gone up thirty thousand dollars, so. You know, at, at some point, we're going to have to give a verbal to, to the vendors. We procure this all through the state contract, and our hands are tied really with it. You know, we're going to look into some other non-state contracts maybe moving forward, but it's going to, we have a fluent fleet, fleet right now, and it would kind of rock the boat on that, so.
You gotta do it yourself, Ken.
I, I got it now.
All right.
So this, this will be, uh, for three years, we're going to generate twenty-five thousand dollars. We, we actually crushed seventeen thousand tons of aggregate. And just to put a volume to that, that's, that's, um, it's a massive pile. If we were purchasing it, we'd probably be paying twenty-two dollars a ton for it. We paid in the neighborhood about six or seven dollars a ton. And on top of that, I'm, I'm sure you guys have heard this story before, what would we do with this? We'd be burdened with this product that we excavate every day. We'd do probably three hundred, three hundred catch basins a year, and that's really what that is. It's the, the catch basin we removed, the asphalt, the soils, if they're good enough to, to blend with it. If it has a gravel or rocks, rocky to it. So this is something that is, is a huge asset. We're fortunate enough to have the real estate to bring a contractor in to actually make the product and, and house it. So we, we've been doing it every three years, and that's, this is basically a projection that seventy-five thousand dollars should hopefully cover us at that point. This particular truck is, is a crew leader truck, and it is, to Tom's point, is right now, this, the truck we're replacing is down here doing the center of town, all these little cross streets, Iron Horse Boulevard, Jim Gallagher and such. And, you know, it's equipped with a sander and a plow. And I, I personally have plowed people's driveways and, and sanded people's driveways and got out of there in a hurry to let the ambulance back in, and it's, and I'm not out there doing it very often. It's just part of my response is to, to be out there moving around during the storms and such. So unfortunately, this one, as you know, with trade values and such, it's going to cross the hundred thousand, uh, hundred thousand mile threshold, which, once you have six digits to it, it just drops a little bit. But, but we are finding the trade values, because there are no, there's no inventory, the trade values have been pretty good. And hopefully, it, it holds up. To that point, it gave me a trade value last July, and it's still holding. You know, the, the trade's still, and I've been putting another X thousands of miles in my truck, so.
Soft and easy miles, right?
Yeah. Snow plows, we, we don't, we replace them, every ten years we replace them. And it's a little bit out of the cycle. We don't include it in with our truck. When we buy, the two hundred and ten thousand dollars for the truck is not included with a plow. It's, um, sometimes as we're cycling through, we'll get rid of the, uh, the worst plow that we have goes with our trade. We kind of band-aid it together. It's probably already almost failed on us, and we just duct tape it back together, and, and that goes. So this is something, here's another example of cost increases. We don't want to harp on that, but it was, we were able to get them at just nine-nine-nine last year, and now it's fifteen-five. You know, it doesn't even, steel didn't go up that much. It doesn't, I can't justify it, but this is, this is, this is where we're at. The drainage improvements, what we're finding now is a lot of our subdivisions are, you know, in that forty-to-sixty-year-old range. And the, the metal corrugated pipe is, is truly failing here, there, and everywhere. The, the bottom of it just rots out, and, and unfortunately, it's some of the major cross culverts. And sometimes, you know, it's, it's perforated. We, so we're, there, there's that. And every time you turn around, there's just areas of ponding and such that, that need to have drainage improvements. We have a lot of culverts that failed. You can, you can see this, that one that's, that's on. East Wheaton, yeah. And, and it creates a lot of problems. A prop to Tony. Tony just videoed Medicom for us, the WPCA, to, to look at those pipes because they are all metal, and thank goodness, they're, they don't need to be replaced. The integrity's good. And that, that's probably a seventies, late seventies subdivision, something like that. So it's, it's at that threshold that it's forty or fifty years old, so.
What, Kevin, what failed just past Curtis Park before you make the bend to go up to Terriffill? Right there on the side of the road.
You mean the guardrail?
Yeah, the guardrail.
I think somebody failed to navigate that.
Oh, okay. It looks like, it looks like the roadway fell away too, and it broke away.
That was, that was, um, that was erosion, actually. That, that was just erosion. I know what you're talking about. There was just recently, there was a picture of the accident. It doesn't even make sense how the guy did that and took out the guardrails and such. But there was a, a bad erosion, and, and when you get these ICAs or one of these three or four-inch, that, that one that, in an hour, we got, you know, our systems got inundated. Once you get just a little rivlet and you get that heavy rain, it just washes everything away. So that, that particular one was just a gutter failure.
Okay.
And the important thing here is, is most residents.
And the important thing here is most residents don't see what you're talking about here. This is what's in the woods. This is what's downstream of what you're collecting on the streets and other places, right? So this is the other end of it. This is the system that moves the water off our roadways, moves it out of areas, right, into safe places?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So we all, when you're driving around, this is not what we see is walking around. This is what you guys are inspecting. We've seen pictures of it somewhere in the woods that's putting the water into a safe area to disperse it.
Or even this one. This is below East Wheaton Street. But as you drive over it, you don't think that you just went over a cross culvert, that if it was to fail, it would really change your commute.
Would wash the road out, yeah. People don't understand that.
Oh, Maria likes this one. So the one-ton roller is 22 years old. And historically, we have lent Parks and Recreation, one of our rollers. We actually have two. One is a backup because we do so much infrastructure and paving work. We are going to give, and I don't even think Orlando knows this, we're going to give Parks and Recreation one of our rollers so that they can... They use it on their ball fields, and they use it on some of their clay infields and different things like that. So we're not going to trade... We're not going to look at a trade value. There probably isn't a ton, but it's still a functioning unit for what they're going to be doing.
We'll put a bow on it.
Milling. So an interesting thing with this milling machine, this goes on our skid steer. Every intersection, every road that we pave, every intersection, we have to key a joint to give a smooth transition. As some of our roads are failing, however, they're not necessarily... Aquarian may be putting a water main in. Up in Muscat Trail, the roads were awful, could have been paved a couple of years ago. However, Aquarian just put in X miles of utilities up there. So to keep the roads held together, we have a milling machine that goes on our skid steer, and we can do quality patches. You'll see them here, there, and everywhere where it's about a four-foot swath, and our crew really does a nice job holding it together. The one, my first year here, we spent $2,700 for Galasso to do two keyways. We provided sweeper. We provided dump trucks. It was ludicrous. I was like, you've got to be kidding me. And there was a small one. There was a shared one that we shared with Avon and the other towns that we used. And the next year, we bought one, and it's paid for itself probably 15 times over. However, it's a violent machine, and it's just not reliable. So it pays for itself. In one year, it'll pay for itself. And what do you need to run the milling machine? The one that we have is a 2008, and it's really starting to run its course. It's giving us problems. The tires are ready to go. So there's a couple thousand, you know, more than a couple thousand. You know, there's a lot of money involved with that. So we've taken on, we're doing a lot of drainage work ourselves. So this piece of equipment would be out there on the road as we're installing drainage pipes and infrastructure work. And it's something that we...
Will we keep the old one?
This has projected to trade it in. At this price, it's trading in at, I believe it's a $25,000 trade value.
That's a lot. Okay.
And this is...
A quarter of what you're purchasing. Okay.
And to that, you know, to Tom's point, our maintenance program, we need this stuff to be reliable. So our maintenance program reflects that, and...
And the other piece, too, is there's something called fleet creep, where all of a sudden you say, you know, let's keep this. Let's keep this. Let's keep this. And now, all of a sudden, you have this aged equipment where all of a sudden something breaks, and now you're putting new tires on this, and you're putting, you know, a new radiator on that, and...
Or you're storing it in the apple barn.
Exactly.
And then this guy, storage creep.
It'll end up costing you more. And, you know, when you go to these fleet management classes and fleet management training, they always... That's the thing they preach, is you don't want fleet creep. What do you need? What do you use every day? What can have the biggest function? That's what you should...
I just know something like that sounds like it's a pretty cool item to like, give to Orlando or to, you know, to deploy for, just for snow removal purposes. But if you're saying you can't even do that, I'm just... That's a question.
They actually have one of their own that's a few years old. I believe it satisfies them. However, you know, the day of trade, if there is a value and the funds are available elsewhere, it certainly... I deal with Orlando all the time, as well as, you know, the other divisions.
So is that 70 inclusive of trade, or is it 70 and then we get done?
That's the gross or the net.
It's the vehicles closer to $95,000. This is...
That's the net.
That's the net. That's correct. That's right. Tony.
I was going to cover these for Tony. Tony, unless you want to cover these remotely?
And I appreciate you guys...
Do it if you like.
I appreciate you guys' time. I got to go to work.
I actually do. I do have one question for you while you're here. So we talked about, you know, the project that you guys... This is just education. The project you guys did at the end of Owens Brook and Hot Meadow that, you know, I think is just beautiful, and I love the keystone that you guys left. I mean, it's just amazing. And that, to me, showed the talent that's in the department. I know that was a shared. You did brought contractor. But just from the education standpoint, seeing as you worked previously at Sims Craft, right? We had all the toys that you ever wanted over there. Like, the last 30 years, are we upscaling and upscaling the levels of projects that we're taking on in town, would you say? Or are we about... We're always taking on the same difficulty of project? Or are we inhousing more stuff?
I would say we're doing more in-house. I mean, I have a strong construction earth background and road infrastructure and stuff like that. When that, something like that, I could do with my eyes closed. As big a project as that was and everything else, you know, once, you know, we went through the hydraulics and understanding what the pipe size was and everything else, the actual construction is what I'm built for, to be honest with you.
So is it fair to assess that, as opposed to 30 years ago, we're not outsourcing as much projects, as many projects as we normally would have in the past? Because we're upscaling and upscaling ourselves here?
I would, you know, Dan, can't go back too far in the past, not knowing. That may not have been done in-house in the past. And again, we had to rely, we did work closely with Sims Craft or our on-call contractor then, because again, we don't have an excavator big enough to do that.
Yeah, I'm not leading you to the point where, hey, we get to ask for an excavator because we can do this.
And that'd be a great example of one. As much as it would be good to have once in a great while, we don't need it. We have good-sized minis, and if we need a bigger one, we either rent it or we go, we outsource it. We'd actually talked in this, the schedule was busy, of actually trying... I wanted Kevin and I to do a presentation on what we did on Owens Brook, because, you know, real successful, you know, a lot of different town departments. And for under $60,000, not only did we fix that problem, but we really, I think, enhanced that whole area.
Absolutely.
And some of the fun stuff Kevin and I worked on is, we actually, some of those trees, we didn't buy them. We took them from Public Works and replanted them. So I got a couple of coffees bet that they're going to live.
Specific to projects like all the time, but specific to Owens Brook, we chased down the pipe. We went and picked up the pipe and got all the materials. So all we paid for was labor. Paid for labor. We did a ton of the labor with our own staff. What we could do, all the fencing and different things like that, we did. Again, Tony, the investigation of that culvert, we ran a camera up in it, and you could see it still functioned, but it was all rubble and crumpled and everything else, and...
Tony supplied bypass pumping.
Yeah. So it was certainly a multi-department effort, and let's look at it. It's good for...
It's cool. Thank you.
Good job done.
It seems like more and more that we hear these presentations, one of the words that I keep hearing is that we're going to be doing some of this in-house. Like, you talked about the work at the pond, at the farms, we're going to be doing that in-house. And I just, I've been hearing that more and more, it feels like, over the last couple of presentations and stuff, so.
And specifically, we have two small excavators that, when, this is worthless information, but when I came here, we had a 410 rubber tire thing that only goes like this, and the excavators are so efficient. And where some, maybe they would do one or two catch basins we're doing, and the two crews were doing a half dozen, eight, and just what they give us structure we have out here.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good luck with the roads.
Have fun today.
See you, guys. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
All right, fired away, Kevin. Tony.
All right. Good afternoon. I can say good afternoon, though.
Yes.
Hope everybody can hear me okay.
Yep.
The first CNR project that we have is $100,000 for sewer rehabilitation. This is the third year we've been doing this project. Over the past two years, we've done just approximately 25,000 linear feet of sewer pipe. It's added cost savings. We did an open trench repair. It would probably cost roughly around $190,000 or $190 a linear foot. Now that we're doing it this way, it's actually closer to about $35 a linear foot, so we can cover a lot more pipe. The HVAC control rolls right into what Tom was doing for his buildings. Our computer system died a couple of years ago, and this is just to replace that system now. Stuff that you don't see at the sewer treatment plant. We have a lot of ventilation systems, rooftop ventilation systems for air changeouts. Working on those systems is a little bit dangerous because they're on a roof, so we're going to install roof safety railings on all of our buildings.
And...
Is my audio sound really bad?
No, no.
You sound loud in commanding, Tony.
Been the presenters.
Okay. I'm getting just the feedback from the other side, that's all.
Okay. No, and on this, we didn't have a picture, but if you're that interested, we actually have similar safety railings on this building. If you walk out and look back up, you'll see them. And it's for one of these things where, when the crews are up there, and they're up there regularly, you can't forget to install it. It's there, and it's just to make sure that we don't ever, heaven forbid, have some...
These are all funded out of the Sewer Use Fund, so there's no taxpayer dollars.
No taxpayer dollars. Yeah. Tony said he didn't want to come today because he said all anybody cared about is no taxpayer dollars, no sewer fee increase.
Tony, you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Capital projects, we touched on this before, $200,000 a year for the replacement of our existing sidewalk network. Big part of this isn't just the sidewalks. It's also getting the ADA accessible ramps. If we do not have ADA a plan for the replacement of our ramps to become ADA compliant, we would be subject to legal fees and lawsuits and all kinds of troubles. But more importantly, we wouldn't be doing our right job and looking out for the people that do have mobility impairments. So side entrance repairs or reconfiguration for Eno Memorial Hall. This has been out for about 10 years since we had this concept developed. But when you look at Eno Memorial Hall, 90% of the people who enter the building are entering it from the side slash rear entrances. The primary entrance is into the lower level, where you feel like you're almost going down into a tunnel. It's narrow. It's not welcoming. It's marginally accessible, and that is the only accessible entrance at Eno. This plan, which was developed by Crosskey Architects, is to essentially start the ramp almost back at the parking lot, make it very wide. So you don't necessarily feel like you're going down in. It feels like the grade is going to change. And then you're going to have just a big sweeping pathway up that's going to get you to the upper level. We're going to do this on both sides. We're going to now have two, doubling our ADA accessible entrances and exits. It's going to improve the feel of the building and give it some of the respect people need. And with that, we'd be looking at replacing the parking lot at Eno Memorial Hall. And with that, we'd also be doing some work on Railroad Street to get some angle-in parking. So we'd be building a small retaining wall.
Oh, Tom, can I just jump in quickly?
Yep.
I really would just like to quickly thank and acknowledge, we work with a couple of just terrific gentlemen who are the Belden trustees. And a lot of that particular work that Tom just discussed would be funded through the Eno Wood Trust, which is for the care and maintenance of the building. And they've been very supportive of the ADA improvements that we want to make at the building. And they've been letting us save up money, which is a little unusual for trusts. A lot of times, you know, they don't want you to carry over balances year over year, but they really believe in the ADA project. They've been very supportive. They've been letting us save up money so we could do this work. And just, I really want to thank them for that.
I have a question.
You mean the both?
Where's the Station Street?
Yeah. Which is which?
Project.
Station Street? Are we still waiting for a grant on that?
Yeah. So we think it would be a great candidate for a steep grant. Unfortunately, the state has not really run the steep program in many years how it used to be. It used to be a much higher dollar amount. They used to run it very frequently. The most recent time, they only allowed for $128,000. So that's why we applied for the accessibility piece of that PAC project we're currently doing. You know, we're watching, we're monitoring, we're hoping that gets reopened again. And again, for a higher threshold, because we think that that particular project would be a good candidate for a steep grant.
But it's not... I don't... It's not on here. Wasn't it on here at one point? Unless I'm missing it, if somebody could point me to it and see.
I think it's in out year. And again, and that would also just be contingent upon steep funding, but I do think it's in an out year.
I thought it was on there last year, and I know it comes up quite a bit.
Station Street reconfiguration?
Yeah, where is that?
Yes.
Is it CNR or...
2024.
Yep.
It's under, I think, the Public Works CNR.
Okay, CNR.
2024 under Public Works.
Thank you.
For 160 and being funded by grants.
I knew I saw it, but I couldn't remember.
Well, we don't have any traction on it.
Right.
And what do you mean by... What do you mean?
I mean, is it actually something that's viable and being...
100% viable.
But is it in motion, or is it just a theory that's viable?
Have we applied for the... I guess, have we applied for the grant? Is that what you're saying?
There's no grant yet.
Oh, no grant.
But we do think that it's a good candidate for that grant, should they open that up again.
And on that one, the concept I had is, we can give up a foot, foot and a half of Eno property, because we didn't, and we didn't, when we did the sidewalks in the downtown, we didn't replace the sidewalks on the south side of Station Street, so that we could widen the road a smidge in that direction to get it to be the two-way. And at that time, we would also replace the sidewalks at Eno.
And then do you... And then, I mean, we'd mean that the corner at the back, if you're looking out to the meadows, the back left corner of the parking lot, there's a big hump. I mean, that has to be softened to a certain extent, right? Does that corner, that back parking lot?
No. I think you'd be okay. But we are talking about bringing that slope, part of that slope, holding it back with a retaining wall, so that Station Street, right in front of True Value, could be widened, so we could have angle-in parking.
So you're going to be looking up at a wall... I'm just understanding. So there'd be a retaining wall there.
Exactly.
Okay.
Not the whole height, but part of the height, exactly. And then we're also looking to get rid of that rear entrance that's incredibly steep, which it's just heartbreaking. If you're there, and you see seniors trying to navigate up that...
Suspension to get up there, yeah.
Yeah, it's just awful. So we're going to get rid of that, and it's going to be replaced with a, probably a concrete stair, similar to what you have at the Jason property at Fiddler's.
Hmm.
Just getting back to Station Street, because I've heard it come up quite a bit.
Yep.
If we're renovating that whole back of Eno and the entrances, I thought they were kind of planned to be in conjunction with each other. If Station Street comes later, is there impact to the work we're doing, or will it smoothly fit into that?
It's going to blend in. There would be some minor advantages to doing it all at the same time, but we're going to be, knowing that the next project is forthcoming, we're going to be cognizant of making sure the grades and so on will still work with a two-way Station Street.
I guess it's also the question, you could also interpret that, are we doing this that they're all in harmony together from an aesthetic standpoint? You know, we don't need one architect's design or engineer's how to get into that building, and then someone's retaining wall, and then someone's version of the sidewalk, and then someone's version of the... I mean, that's, I can kind of see it looking like it is today, which is an amalgamation of like 200 years of engineering. Hopefully, there's a project oversight with that sort of...
I think we have the same town engineer on it. I'll talk to that guy.
Yeah, right.
I just hope that when all these are executed, they're executed to a certain sense of harmony, not just solving each individual problem.
And keeping in mind, and in some ways, maybe that is the advantage to having, you know, one person to blame for everything. We're going to have the architects working on Eno. Key things that they have to do there is, one, make sure it functions right, looks right, and is historically appropriate. The parking lot and the retaining wall is really more of an engineering function, and it has to function right. We talked about the fact I did once have a life before, Sean at Sims. One of the many things I did was actually worked as a parking consultant. So we're going to make sure that the parking lot functions properly. Coming on one year from now is going to be some boiler improvements at town, at Eno, rather. So one of the things that we're already looking is, can we change the access to the boiler room? And the reason that we'd want to do that is, right now, that bumps out into the parking lot. It's very awkward. Is that something that we can improve now, knowing that we have that larger project coming down the road? So yeah, definitely, thinking of everything and how it's going to fit together is important to us. Would it be great to do this all at once? Certainly. But it would be at the cost of not going for that grant. Kevin left before we could talk about paving. So we pave, how many miles a year do we pave?
Oh, no, every 17 years that we do all the paving.
But how many miles a year, Chris?
10 or 12.
Eric got to a 10.
Well, that's plus minus 50%.
I should be throwing the chocolate to you guys. All right, you had a question?
No.
Okay.
I do have one for Tony later on.
All right, good. You can see we have it's a combination of bonds, town aid road, LoSIP, and it just really gets us to that $1.2 million number. I know, Sean, you're about to ask, how are we looking in terms of inflation? These numbers are the numbers we've been carrying for... These numbers are the numbers we've been carrying for a couple of years. This year, the most recent bid that came out for the state asphalt, which is called the Vendor In Place Program, is up about 15%. On top of that price, throughout the season, the price fluctuates based upon the cost of liquid asphalt, which is one of the main ingredients in asphalt. So we're probably looking at a 20% increase in terms of our paving costs. We had a real good talk, Kevin, myself, and actually a couple of our counterparts from Avon, just this week about, should we pave now, or should we wait to see if it goes down? And what we're going to be doing is doing all our prep, and we're going to start our paving work. If we see a drastic escalation in the price, we're going to have a serious conversation of, okay, do we hold off for this season and catch everything next season if we see forecasts that look like it's going to be less? We have about six or seven different techniques that we use on the road. Each and every one is looked at very, very carefully. I know this is always a big number, but I don't think there's anything within the department that we do better than this.
And I got to give you credit, and I do every year, is when I was first on this board, we were at 1.8, 1.9, because you were improving the condition of the roads. You've since gotten the roads, and you held your word, and you do every year, that eventually, once you raised the quality of our roads, the cost was going to come down, and it has come down, and it has stayed down. So, I mean, I think that's, that's important, and I think the residents do appreciate and now expect the level of roads of where they're at, where they had an 85 now, right, or above, and that was the standard we were going for?
We, right now, and I say this carefully, we are at the level we want to be. We probably, arguably, we have some of the best roads in the state. And this summer, we are going to actually try a couple of new techniques where we're going to do thinner overlays, very high-tech driveway sealer, not the same stuff you would buy at Home Depot, where we may do a couple of roads that were resurfaced six or seven years ago with these new techniques to start experimenting, because they could potentially, no promises, keep this number low even as we see escalations, or even possibly decrease it if they work well. But we're going through it very carefully, and we're picking good candidates so that we can test some.
You can test it on my driveway if you'd like.
That'd be my last week at work. I'm already worried that Kevin said how we plow and sand driveways, I'm waiting for somebody to call up during the next storm, like, I saw the budget presentation, he said he plows driveways.
I was thinking about that.
I'm glad he said in front of the ambulance eventually.
Only if an ambulance is coming.
But this is really important, and again, it's not just, it's not just for show for
the residents, it's important because this is a place that taxpayers can spend a lot of money, and that budgets can continue to escalate, and that would be normal in other communities. And I, this is where the value, I think, of high-quality professional staff really comes in, is, are we saving money every year directly? No, but are we spending less money than we could potentially? I think the answer is yes here. And I think it's a good partnership with the professional staff, and again, the, your comprehension of what we're trying to do from a service delivery model, but also respecting the cost structure. So again, I think it's important to talk about every year, because, you know, we often get accused on Facebook, or in meetings, or other places, of we just rubber step everything, and no, this is, it's one of the main things we do, and it's one of the things that impacts a resident every single day, and I think you do it at a phenomenally high-quality level for a deal relative to what I think other communities experience, so.
I appreciate that. This is the parking lot here at Town Hall, clearly is not in the same condition as our roadways. I know...
After all those nice things I just said about...
I know. We're looking at reconfiguring the lot, changing the entrance, changing the flow of traffic patterns. This had been managed by engineering, it went out to bid last year, the bids came in very high. We are looking for an additional appropriation for this. We're also going to be doing some level of value engineering in the next couple of weeks to see if there's some ways that we can reduce the cost even further. And again, this is asphalt that's been down for probably 30 years. This, I mean, again, it's not at a point that you want it to be. We've done a number of patches over the years, but it's good money after bad, it's long overdue.
Not to mention, the lighting is very critical, because it's really dark and scary.
I can't agree more, I mean, we talked about that just yesterday in terms of with people leaving the building late and feeling safe, and even though you're, you know, you have the police station here, it's still a dark lot, it's not, the theory when the original lighting went in was we didn't want, or the town didn't want light islands, they didn't want it to be lit up like a Walmart, but you need it to be at a safe level, and this design includes new lighting.
And when you say walkway there, that includes the, does that include the entrance to Town Hall, that side entrance, like where the police department is, wasn't there going to be some work done?
This is going to, yeah, this is going to change, you're going to, the entrance and exit that you probably came in this morning across the post office is going to be closed off, entrance is going to be moved to the north, going to change the walkways.
No, you're talking about, you're talking...
No, I'm talking about the entrance by the police department.
The physical entrance to this building, not to the...
Nope, that is not being changed.
Oh, okay.
We talked about that in our tour.
I think we did, right.
Yeah, that's second favorite project to the, to the entrances at Eno, is, again, when you walk into this building, which is an important building, it's not a welcoming or comfortable feel. So when we renovate Town Hall, that is one of the things that's going to be upgraded, so that you'd be walking in, it would probably be automatic doors, glass storefront, so you'd feel like you're walking in, then we can have much better lighting, probably, heaven forbid, carpeting.
And more accessible, because right now, if you need an elevator, you have to go down the slope to take the, to go into the police department to take an elevator up.
And we're not necessarily able to correct that, just because we can't get, get you up to grade, but hopefully, as part of that, we can also change the number of doors and the configuration of the police lobby to make that, again, not just accessible, but welcoming.
Lobby, that looks like...
I just said that.
It's like you're going to a prison.
It is, it's horrible.
But that's a, that's a, that's a different renovation project.
I don't know that feeling, but I'll take your word.
It's like a movie, it's a movie, it's like a movie prison. It's a risk of blasphemy, and I don't want to, I don't want to spark a real long debate, but I mean, this building is really, really expensive to maintain, it's really, really expensive to renovate, I mean, and I want to be, I don't want, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but in the professional opinion, should we really be sinking millions of dollars into this building, or should we be looking for a different place to run the government out of? If it was, I mean, forget that, forget that this is a historic building, and we all love it, and we're emotionally attached to it, but...
Repurpose it for condos. It's a good question, I think, I 100% agree with what you're saying. At so many municipalities, we're in an old classroom.
Yes.
Literally, this is a chalkboard tray right here, if you never took time to look at this, this molding, these are actually the old chalkboard trays.
Yes.
And this is not how you would want a main meeting room to be, and we have a renovation plan, but I think it's a good question to ask, and we do still have Tecton on as our facilities master plan, and I don't think it's a bad exercise to ask them for their professional opinions as to whether or not, how big of a delta would that be?
Again, I'm not looking to spend $20 million on a brand-new municipal complex, but if we're going to spend $30 million to renovate this thing, have the less-than-ideal space over whatever years, continue to shoehorn a police department in inadequate space, ventilation, structural, et cetera, et cetera, again, I love this building, and I don't want to leave it, but is this really where we should be running the government out of?
No, I think it's a really good question, and it even, maybe it even ties back into our fleet, because we can all understand owning and operating cars, we wouldn't sink money into old pickup trucks at a certain point, it's not valuable. So I think you bring up a good point, I will tell you, the rehab for the Town Hall portion was much lower than 30 million, but it's still a good point.
This year, but over the, over the lifecycle, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay, so.
I think it's a very good conversation. I don't want to waste anybody's time today on it, but just, my mind was thinking about it as, as we look at it.
So we got, we got, we got our flower bridge, I'm going to take credit for taking that photo, I was very proud of that iPhone. We're looking at doing the design this year, so that we would be set up to do construction the following year. I have seen, I've glanced at the report, I know there is some concern about the overall condition of this bridge. Again, I spent a lot of my earlier career inspecting old bridges. The flower bridge is not in a condition that it's going to fall down. I know there was briefly a concern about its load rating, actually, we fixed that. Public Works put together the repair out at our shop, we welded and fabricated the repair and installed it for, essentially for freight, for town labor and a couple pieces of scrap steel. There's painting work that needs to be done, there's some steel replacement that needs to be done, but I think it's important to reassure the people who are so invested in this flower bridge, as much as you look at those pieces of steel that are rotted out, those are not the ones that are going to cause the bridge to fail. The thing that does scare me on this bridge is if the water level gets above and actually gets to the point of touching the bridge, it's making sure that it stays on its foundation, because it's a relatively light bridge, and if you start getting debris and/or water pushing against it. So when we had our flooding last year, I was watching this very, very closely.
Yeah, and we hadn't seen those water levels since I was a kid, and the last time it went over the bridge was 55, right, because there's the marker.
I actually have a picture, I believe it went over the bridge in 86.
Was it 86?
It actually, not even over the deck, it hit the bottom cord.
But not like 55, because there's a...
That's correct.
There's a watermark on the back of the Fitzgerald's building, right, that shows that there's actually a point where it shows you how high the water got into town.
Yeah, because the two biggest floods were in 55, and then the next biggest, I think, was actually in 2009, following Irene.
Yeah.
Or actually, no, then it was 2000, then it was in the 80s, then it was, the fourth was Irene.
Yeah.
I do remember seeing it flooded when it was in the 80s, and coolest thing ever is the pumpkins got flooded, so they floated, and there were people there with poles with milk crates catching them. I wanted to, I wanted to pay the guy to play the game, I mean...
They can catch pumpkins floating.
So if we, maybe, maybe I can come up into the revenue business next time there's a flood.
I thought that there were, I saw some discrepancy in how the flower bridge was planned to be funded, can you just repeat that?
Oh, sure. So we had, for many years now, been programming this for fiscal '23, '24, but, you know, we know it's going to be really hard for the community, because when we do this work, we are going to have to close the bridge for the entire season again, having had to do that for, you know, when we, when we constructed the park, again, that's just really hard on the community. And so we just thought strategically, especially again with supplies being hard, lining up contractors, like, let's get the design work done this year, and just get it done, have it as ready to go as possible. So in the next year, when we're funding the actual rehabilitation work, doing rehabilitation work, we really just want to make the most of that construction season, so it doesn't bleed into, you know, another season, essentially. So that was our thought with breaking up the design and trying to get, get ahead on that design work this current fiscal year. And since we did have some cash capacity in the budget, we proposed using cash to fund the design work, but then that also does alleviate a little bit of pressure on debt service in future years, as opposed to bonding for the design and the construction work.
So the plan is to bond for?
For the renovation work, correct?
Right, okay, that's where I was seeing the discrepancy. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I asked, because it showed in the chart, it showed it all as general funds when year '23, '24 was actually bonding.
Yeah, I think we provided a correction page, and I believe the backup slot did show proportion of...
But yeah, that's where you did change bits.
And we are going to look, when we're working on the design, as to when is the best time of year to do the construction? Is there an ability to maybe get part of the season in? I don't know, but we'll certainly ask those questions.
And a lot of the cost, right, is because we have to remediate, because you have to catch everything, you can't let it go into the river, can't hit the ground, right? You've got to put all the apparatus underneath.
Yeah, because there's, I'm almost guaranteed that there's lead paint on there.
Right.
So we can't have that in the river, because you're going to then catch a nine-pound trout.
So when you see bridges totally encapsulated in the blankets, et cetera, that's what we're going to see for a season, right? You can't have a...
Possibly, possibly. There's one other system for de-letting bridges or de-letting paint, which is using, it's called a needle gun. It would be a hose that does two things, it has needles, little metal rods that fire out very fast under compressed air, and on the outside, there's a shroud, which is a vacuum, and it sucks up the paint. It's usually used for smaller repairs, but again, these are things to push our designers to say, can we use this instead, and will it have a better impact on our overall cost, construction duration, what are our options?
All right. Love that you're looking at that, thanks, Tom.
Tony, want to take, take our WPCA clarifier in-depth evaluation?
Sure. This is another one of those fun ones that guys never see. The primary clarifiers are part of the initial treatment process of the facility. There was a structural repair that was done to the tanks when the plant upgrade was completed in 2005. For approximately the last 11 years, we actually have not even used these primary tanks, because they actually deplete the food source for our biological process, so we don't use them at this point in time. However, we are required to have all of our equipment in 100% operational condition for our national permit. What we are going to do is do a study on this, one, to see what the cost of the repairs would be, and two, to see if we can mothball or abandon them and take them out of our permit. So that's what this $150,000 is for. We actually earmark, the reason it's in the capital projects, we actually earmarked a million dollars for structural repairs if that has to happen.
I think it's important to, I promise you, we're doing everything we can not to repair something for a million dollars that does not add a significant value to the operation of the plant.
So it's $150,000 to determine what the cost is to do what? To decommission?
To determine if, if we can do repairs to the existing, and whether or not we can take it offline and redo our permit so that we don't need this.
Well, why wouldn't we, why would we spend any money at all? Why would we just make the assumption that we can apply for the change, the permit? I don't understand.
Can you hear that, Tony?
Yeah, we still have to have an engineering analysis done on that to prove that we can't, that we don't have to use them anymore.
Remember, it's guilty till proven innocent for permits.
Okay, I'm not going to...
And it may, we're hoping...
I've got a low sugar right now, so maybe I missed my...
That's all right, we'll get you to lunch soon, because I think we're...
I don't understand.
Because part of the permit, the permit assumes it's necessary part of the structure, so in order to remove it, you have to prove that you don't need it, right?
And we're hoping this, this is a very conservative number, and we're hoping we don't need this, and we're hoping that Tony can convince the right people that, again, we've been operating without using, they're essentially large tanks for a number of years.
So even though it's in the permit, we're not using it?
We don't need it, nope. In fact, it actually is non-beneficial to what the plant does.
You can't refile the permit without that component requested in it, that's...
Chris is suggesting we wipe that out.
I just, I'm sorry, I just, I'm trying to, simplistically, the process, it's very muddy.
We could try, we could try to do that, our permit was just renewed with these in it, so our permit's every five years. But we have to do that, but after that, we have to wait another four more years before that permit will actually happen. But, and I mean, we'll have to have some engineering study done that says we don't need them.
At the end of the day, this is a defensible use of Sewer Use Funds.
Yes.
Here we go.
And again, it's coming out of user fees.
I was going to say, it's not taxpayer...
I know, but it's, it's coming out of user fees, but the absurdity of the conversation doesn't change who's paying for it.
And I can promise you, Chris, it's not lost on us, we've been talking about this for a number of months, where...
I mean, we're building the Golden Berman a couple of years there too, right, so... I mean, we're building the Golden Berman a couple of years there, too, right, so.
I believe, were we denied for that grant finally?
Yes, for the Berman, we were not approved for that grant.
Lovely.
So, we're in no rush to do that.
Good. We have a dredging from town four she can put on there.
No, no, it doesn't have the right mineral content.
Are you done?
I'm done.
I have a question, going back to, and I want to use the expression to, you know, beat a whatever. Going back to the Station Street thing, right? Because I'm picturing we're redoing all of Eno, the whole parking lot, part of Railroad Street, right? So, the first question I have is, if you're doing all that, is there capacity while you're doing that project to include Station Street?
We would be, possibly.
Okay, so, so that, this is just for future thought, okay? Like, just bringing this up here. So, if that was possible, and where I'm going with this really is going to be talked about later, and it says it's 160, 180 in here, right? The business community seems to be hugely in favor of Station Street for traffic downtown. I don't know if people have heard that. Am I making that up? I've heard that, right? Is that a common theme that we've heard?
I think it's positive economic development.
Yeah, so, so positive economic development, right?
Two businesses that are
So, we have, we've heard that a lot, and then again, we have the ARPA funds for economic development, right? I mean, I know this is grant potential money, but we don't yet have the grant today, and we have to apply for the grant. So, I'm just saying, we have ARPA funds that we could talk about later, because there's ARPA funds that are being asked for for other business uses, but if that were lessened, and we use more of it for something like this to benefit and incorporate that whole project in one, it's just an option. So, I just wanted to put that out there for, for later when we talk about that.
And the only real challenge to the Station Street project is, we're tying into Route 10, and there's a state DOT-owned and controlled signal, so we just need to do some work and some utility relocation, and that's the expense event. The rest of it, and getting it to the appropriate width and all of that, is something we would be able to do in-house.
Is that the only one-way street? I picture another one, but that's the only one?
No, the one next to it is.
Yeah, isn't there two?
Yeah.
Why aren't we talking about that?
Well, that's a far, that doesn't even serve any
Because that's what goes into the park.
By the historic There's no business on that. There's one business, that's the old framed glass place.
And that, that is so narrow. There's not a lot of real estate, unless we got rid of the sidewalk entirely.
Okay.
And then the street next to Andy's, right, is not ours.
That's an alley.
That's an alley.
It's two-way, but it's not even public.
That is not being plowed by us right now.
So, Tony, just to, maybe clarify, is anybody aware of either any federal mandates or federal conversations or state conversations that have been in the past or current or whichever around the, the decommissioning of septic in municipalities, in towns, in suburban towns? Someone brought that to my attention. And is that a conversation, conversation that's ever, with the EPA, that's ever taken place, where we're going to be moving towards, you know, sewers, sewer societies to a certain extent? Is that anything that's out there with us? Have you talked about with your
Not specifically, and Tony, jump in when I get over my head. Right now, Farmington Valley Health District oversees all septic systems, and every few years, the requirements for septic systems change and get more stringent. Septic systems are a viable way to treat wastewater. It is not nearly as guaranteed or assured in terms of the final outcome as going through the treatment plant that Tony operates. If a septic system was failed, a lot of places in Simsbury, you have good sandy gravels, and you would never know that it's failed, so you're putting waste that has not been appropriately treated into the groundwater. We had this conversation a couple of weeks back with the folks from Pine Hill. It's not the worst in terms of, it's not a high-hazard chemical pollutant. It's not going to leave long-term effects, but it's not a desirable setup. We do have, any place in town, right now, if we have a sanitary sewer in front of your property and your septic system fails, you're not allowed to replace your septic system. You are then required to hook up
Tie-in, yeah, exactly. I get it. But I said, now, if there was any sort of conversations where the government, federal government is moving towards requiring states to establish
No.
A program where you, you know, you take, you no longer allow for, unless it's in an area where it's impossible to connect to sanitary sewers, but you're no longer allowed to approve, if you will, for the development that is not on sewer.
Tony, how many tens of millions of dollars is it to do West Mountain? We looked at that number years ago, right?
For West Mountain, it would have been, just to get a main line out there to take the flow, would have been about $20 million.
Yeah.
And then for each home to connect, it was right around anywhere between $35,000 and $15,000.
Okay, so That's just West Mountain. That's not the, the, the sub-streets off of West Mountain, right?
That's, that's all of the West Mountain area.
It is the West Mountain area, okay.
So, great, so thank you for answering my first question, which was nothing out there. Second, just for education, last one, what percentage of our town, of the, what do we, 6,000 homes?
About half, Tony?
There's, yeah, there's, just, just under 6,000 homes or homes and businesses that are connected to the sanitary sewer.
There's 9,000. There's nine, there's over 9,000 households.
So, about 6,000.
Homes and businesses.
Tight, tight end of the 9,000 homes, or
It's 9,000 homes plus however many businesses.
Commercial buildings, okay, thank you.
Only a third, only a third is.
Federal mandates for
Basically, 60% are
A lot of that is happening in shoreline communities, where they were never intended to be full-time homes, and everyone's changing them over to full-time homes, and their water rates are low, so the septic system can't handle the year-round
Old say, bro.
So, they're all getting mandated.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question related to this? Because it came up with people, if, if people were to, with an ADU, that has to come into every conversation, if you were to add an ADU to your property, and it was a freestanding, if it was allowed, would that have to be connected to the septic, right? You'd have to connect the freestanding unit to the septic and pay to connect it?
Not to the septic, to the sewer.
To the sewer, that's what I meant, yeah. Okay, I just would, just someone asked me that the other day, and since I had Tony there and you here, I thought I would ask that.
Absolutely. It's a new, new user base.
Yeah, okay. And then the other thing, do you want to just mention, since we're going to be breaking, I think, after this?
Yeah, I think we could turn and break.
The, the, how the Pine Hill meeting went, because Tony's on, just, I don't know if everybody heard that you guys met?
Yeah, we, we had a meeting, was it Monday, Tony? Last Monday? It's all blend, on Monday at the library, and we did the Tom and Tony Show, and we did not talk about anything other than the fact that we have old sanitary sewers in Pine Hill. It was very well represented. I think we had about 30 people live, and about four or five people on Zoom, and it was a very productive meeting. They are going, we are going to get revised cost estimates for them. They're going to go back, and they need a two-thirds vote of their board as to whether or not to move forward with the WPCA initiating a project to replace the sanitary sewers, replace laterals as nearest practical to the houses, and in doing so, we are going to end up repaving the roads within their association. We talked about changing the payback period from 10 to 15 years. We're not comfortable going beyond 15 years for a number of reasons. And again, they, they were very, we had a lot of good questions, and everybody was very positive, so it was a real good meeting.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
That's a good outcome. That's the right outcome, too. Thank you for talking about it.
Thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's the longest I've ever stood up here.
Was it 11? Who came in 11?